I will just share over to the, oh, Martha beat me to the recording. So we're started on that again. And share screen. There we go. Okay. So for the, uh, the first item on our agenda is, uh, after the call to orders additions and corrections. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda this evening?
No.
Okay, if not, then we move to opportunity for public to address the board. For public that is present, uh, staff public, do you have anything to add to the meeting?
I did not.
What staff is present Martha Gillian?
Like it's just Martha and Gillian right now. It sounded like Eliza was gonna try and pop in a bit later, but just the two of them right now.
Okay, is anybody else joining us from the, from the public?
Uh, Katie had another commitment, so she wasn't able to.
Okay, and then the next item on the agenda is the, sorry, scrolling around on the other tabs so that I can share over. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the September meeting. Scrolling the wrong way. Here we go. Um, so minutes are here. Do we have any questions, comments, or corrections on the minutes? Uh, if not, then I would look for a motion to approve.
I saw move.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries minutes are approved. Okay, which takes us up to expense reports. And fairly boring report, uh, for the month. We're still very much trying to keep things as conservative as we can on the expense side. Uh, and things are kind of an imposed conservativeness on the revenue side. So, uh, looking at the top of the form here, uh, top of the first page, you can see that, with this 230,000 that we got another big chunk of our property tax revenue, takes us up to 736,000. You know, we, we've got a, a chunk yet to hopefully arrive. Um, I am a bit more optimistic this month on, uh, on that in that I've had a chance to touch base with some libraries that, are partly or completely in neighboring counties that don't have, uh, this, uh, property tax deferral option that Lake County's put in place. And what they've seen is that they've gotten pretty much all their property taxes that they were expecting thus far. So, um, for say McHenry and, uh, you know, Will County, for, for them to be directors there to be saying, yeah, we're, we're, we're getting pretty much everything that we'd asked for in terms of the levy. That's encouraging, though I'm still gonna have my fingers crossed until, uh, you know, we get to the point where we've got most all that in. But right now, the balance as far as what we've received property tax stands at this 736,000. Um, we'll look hopefully, uh, fingers crossed in the next month or two to get it up close to that 987 that we asked for. Other than that, not too much that's.
When is the latest date that you would anticipate being at that 987?
Latest date that I've ever seen us receive any sort of property tax revenue is January.
Oh, okay.
Because most of this should relate to people making use of the defer, deferral option. You know, really, November, December should be most telling. If we haven't received most of it by then, then that would probably be a red, red flag at that point.
Well, let me turn the question around. Um, right now we're at 75% of the budget. Typically, at this time, where would we be?
Uh, typically, I mean, we can highlight the number. Um, at this point last year, we were at 917,000 received. Um, and that was for an amount that was a bit less than what we requested this year, but.
So we got a ways to go. Yeah.
So we got a ways to go. But you know, with, with this, obviously we received another solid 50, 60,000 after that. In the, in the next month, at least, so fingers crossed. Any other questions on the, on the levy before migrate down? Okay, um, otherwise it really isn't that much, um, else to really draw attention to. Most of this is, um, pretty typical. Uh, we did get our quarterly, one of our quarterly bills for computer services, uh, for our, maintenance providers, uh, with CVI, that's the 3200 there. Um, other than that, pretty standard expenses as, you know, noted, we're working pretty hard to keep things under wraps, um, at this point, keeping operations going while not, you know, really pursuing any big projects or expenses here that could be deferred at this time. Which shows up in the bottom line that, uh, you know, this month we spent 71,000 versus same month last year, uh, where we spent 94,000. So, clipping along. Uh, that is the summary then, as far as what I've got for the, the financial reports. I would ask for any questions that anyone might have. Uh, otherwise I would look for a motion to approve, uh, the reports.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Oh, I think Kathy got in first. Okay, so, uh, motion from Heinzelman, second from Meyerhoff, uh, we'll take a roll call vote because it is money. Uh, trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Excellent, carries unanimously. And we will move down to the checks. Again, these are fairly straightforward, a couple that I'll draw attention to. Uh, the first one on the first page here, uh, Tumbleweed Press, uh, that's our annual renewal, uh, for, oh, watch my mind go blank, tumble books, tumble books, uh, which are interactive kids, uh, reading materials. And then also, a little bit farther down here, we've got Hall Pass, which is one that occasionally shows up on, um, the invoices. That is the name of the company that we use for our, uh, background checks.
You know, Eric, I, I sign, I don't know if this is the check I signed today, probably is, but that just seemed like an odd amount. Uh, how, how thorough of a background check can be done for six bucks?
Well, um, I mean, it's, it's not, uh, the sort of background check where they're, um, canvassing people to the extent that they would if, you know, you were applying for a job with the Secret Service. But it's a broad but thorough check of state and national databases, uh, particularly focusing on things such as violent offenses and anything related to, uh, children.
Gotcha. So this is for a, a potential employee or volunteer?
Yes.
Okay.
Was for, um, Kenan McBane, um, who's joining us as a, uh, Shelver slash library assistant. Since our intrepid, um, Shelver, uh, Zach, who was with us for two years, uh, is off to college, uh, this fall.
I see.
So, honor that he's off to, you know, pursue higher education, though we'll, we'll miss him. Zach was incredibly diligent and committed to, to the library. Ken is shaping up pretty good too. She's been a volunteer for a number of years.
Excellent.
Okay, and I think that pretty much covers it. The last thing that I would highlight would be, um, these two items here. First, uh, rails, the amount there, the $350 is an annual membership fee. Um, we pay a small fees, um, part of our inclusion in that, uh, reaching across Illinois library system, uh, to support, uh, the work that they do on behalf of, uh, the libraries here in the northern half of Illinois. And last but not least, USA Fire Protection, that represents the annual, uh, inspection and as necessary maintenance of our fire extinguishers.
Now going back to rails for a second, just a question, uh, is there, do we, is interlibrary loan happening right now, or is that just sort of on hold?
It is, it is, it is running. Um, it had not been for a few months, but, um, try, I don't remember the exact date, but it was the end of July, they, they started running again. They are taking a lot of, uh, care in how they're doing that. You know, unfortunately that slows down the service a bit versus how quickly it would usually run, uh, because they, let the materials quarantine for a while after they pick them up, but, it's good to have it running. It's good to have that access and honestly, it's incredibly, one of those small frustrations that just kind of eats at your soul for library and is not being able to return stuff if it belongs to another library. We want to get that stuff home. But they do a lot of good work. We do programs, uh, we do a lot of, um, they gather together, uh, information, they negotiate discounts on behalf of members. They, uh, during this time are, uh, kind of been a clearinghouse for information as well as template plans, um, procedures and policies. So we get a lot for that 350. Any questions on some of our checks? Hearing none, I would look for a motion to approve.
I just, I just had one, the, um, big check made out to, um, Vanguard Plan, that's, is that a monthly? I can't remember if that's monthly or not. That's insurance, is it not?
That's ordinarily monthly. But the, the, what that is, is it's a deferred retirement plan. So it's, it's an item that shows up on, uh, employee paychecks if they've opted to defer part of their check into that retirement plan. And then the library, after that amount has been deferred, then cuts a check to the payment plan, uh, to the retirement plan. That got delayed a bit. The works as we were transiting from using ADP to pay lossity for our payment software got a bit gummed up over the summer. So rather than, um, you know, a single pay period or a single month, this represents, um, a few months, uh, cause we got behind as part of that process. But this catches us up and then in the future it'll be back down to the usual, you know, three or $400 at a pop, uh, rather than that, but you know, it's, it's a bit of an unusual setup, um, but as a deferred payment, it, it is, you know, essentially pay that was withheld from the employee and then the library is cutting the check to pass it on to the payment plan.
Okay.
Eric, on the, on the, the checks above there, it looks like July and August all got paid out. Is that, um, for, for this month as opposed to separate months? Is, is that also part of the, um, um, ADP to pay lossity transfer over?
Uh, which one am I looking at?
So where you are, um, check date Village of Lake Bluff?
Oh, that actually is related to, uh, the changeover in personnel at Village Hall.
Okay.
At the end of July, uh, Marlene Schible, who had been with the village for many years and was the point person for handling, um, library, financial items, uh, departed and then, um, over the last few months, they've been working up, um, a, uh, oh, my mind is really not working well this evening. Um, it's somebody that they brought in from a company is a temp, that's the word I'm looking for. They have a temp that they've been working up over the last couple of months, so, um, as, as part of that, um, in September, he sent us a bill for several months because we hadn't gotten one for a while while they were in transition.
Got it.
So short answer is not pay lossity, but change in personnel.
Agent personnel, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, then I would look for a motion to approve.
I move that we approve whatever we're supposed to approve.
The checks, Cal, uh, let me.
14529 to 14534 and then 14536 to 14557.
Okay.
Scroll up here and.
Thank you, Cal.
There. There's the range of the checks there. Um, so Cal moved, did we have a second?
Second.
John seconds. Uh, again, we'll do a roll call vote because it's, uh, finances. So trustee Hayes.
Aye.
Trustee Heinzelman.
Aye.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Church.
Aye.
Trustee Stroh.
Aye.
Okay. And that will take us up to committee reports, which does not have a document in here, so I can click on stop sharing there. Have had two committees that have met, uh, finance and human resources. Uh, finance, uh, the committee was focused on the levy. Do we want to get into that now or, uh, as part of the new business?
We can wait, we, we can wait.
As part of new business.
Yeah.
Um, and HR met, uh, just yesterday. Trying to remember who ended up as the,
I did.
As the chair for that. You did, that's right. Oh, Kathy, how could I forget you? So do we have a, do you have a report from the?
Yeah, I'm just gonna, very briefly, uh, John, Janie and I, um, attended, so, um, Scott had been chairperson, so I agreed to take that on. And the main reason for meeting, really the only reason for meeting was a mid-year, uh, review of Eric's performance, which we all agree is going very well. Um, he shared his goal, his primary goal was communication, uh, in particular stressing brevity, focus and staying to the point. He continues to work from time to time with a, um, kind of a communication coach who's been very helpful to him and we certainly encourage him to keep that up as possible. I pointed out that I think in, in addition to his communication, which he's working on, his, um, his strong technology skills have really lent to his communication this past, however many months it is now, because he's so comfortable with, um, oh, what he's doing tonight, leading a meeting, uh, you know, showing us the documents online, working with, uh, the equipment. So I think that that's definitely lent to his success. The goal of the committee is to keep his performance review on a definite schedule, which would be a final, uh, year-end review in April, which would probably mean that in February or March, we would confer as a board, any recommendations or suggestions. Um, and the committee would complete a review to be presented probably after the March meeting, uh, with Eric, share goals, share expectations and then, um, finalize in April. So we're gonna work really hard to stick with that schedule for, for both Eric's peace of mind and for us kind of having that responsibility. One thing that Eric did mention during the meeting was, kind of, did we feel that meetings, committee meetings were happening, um, as necessary or not enough or too much? Although there really haven't been any since probably winter till just now. And, and my thinking is they're picking up now by necessity. They haven't really been a big, there hasn't been a big need. I think the, the greatest focus the last several months has been internal, um, activities. And we all praised the, the staff for its dedication and hard work and creativity. And we want them to know that we really do support them and we would, you know, want that recognition to be very, very apparent. Although it's hard because we're not in there seeing them and patting them on the back, but, um, kind of a virtual back pat is in line. Meetings are picking up. They, well, we just met with finance, we met HR, B and G is meeting this month. So that's just sort of as the need arises, meetings should occur and then keep the, the board advised. So that's pretty much it. Any questions or anything?
Okay, um, are there any reports from any of the committees that did not meet? Hearing none, I will hop back over here to the board packet and, uh, we'll take a look at the, uh, information on the levy. Uh, so the finance committee, uh, met and discussed, uh, the, uh, levy proposal. Uh, the information that was presented to the, uh, finance committee is included here in the, in the board packet. The, uh, Village, uh, Bettino Connell, who is the finance director for the, uh, for the Village of Lake Bluff, prepared basically three numbers in the packet that she gathered together, um, and shared with us. Uh, the first was a, um, PTEL property tax extension law limit, uh, which is a calculated percentage increase that we generally try not to go above. That rate basically calculated using the, uh, CPI provided by the state of Illinois of 2.3%, which all of that math equals out to a 2.644% increase, which would be a levy of 1,013,829. The other two calculations were a PTEL increase without, um, the CPI factor. Uh, so it would be a PTEL increase that did not provide for, um, that consumer price index increase. So, um, which of course is cost of living, uh, essentially, uh, and acknowledgement of the fact that things cost more from one year to another. Uh, that increase would be, uh, more modest. It would be, uh, a levy request of 991,036 dollars. Uh, the third number that she calculated, uh, for us was a frozen levy, um, straight up frozen levy. Um, and that would be 987, 711, same amount as we had requested, uh, this year. So, uh, looking at all of the, the considerations, uh, the, uh, sense of the finance committee, uh, was to recommend that the PTEL extension, including the 2.3% CPI. So option number one that I have highlighted here, uh, the, the main reasons that were discussed there is, um, that we are in, uh, the process of, uh, rebuilding the reserve. Uh, we did go before the village, uh, board, uh, just two years ago and, uh, made the case why in that particular, uh, levy year, we needed to go a bit above, uh, a PTEL request in order to, uh, jumpstart the process of rebuilding our reserves after they were depleted by the, um, replacement of the roof. So, looking at the current levy in, in, in the full picture, continuing to rebuild that reserve would be a lot more of a challenge. If we were to freeze the levy this year and then could potentially set us, put us in a position where we would have to go over PTEL again in order to, um, do what we did two years ago, to re-jumpstart, uh, because we opted to sit still. Uh, we do also have some, uh, considerations as far as dealing with, uh, staffing costs. Uh, we still have, uh, a, a good chunk of our staff that is, uh, has a pay rate below, uh, what's been set as the new, uh, minimum wage rate for Illinois at $15. Uh, and that means that, that, uh, pay, um, and those rates continue to rise each year, uh, which is an expense then that we need to, uh, plan for in, you know, not something that we can, try to freeze because it would make us non-compliant with state law, which is never a good place to be. We do also, uh, as compared to some other village entities, in particular the village, uh, have a challenge, uh, in that most of our, um, annual expenses are focused on operating. Uh, we don't have a lot of money in our annual budget that we put towards, um, big capital projects, which makes it a bit more of a challenge than to, um, defer any substantial portion of what we would ordinarily be spending. What I've heard from other entities in the village is that, um, for the most part across the board, uh, it, the, the main thinking for most of the taxing entities is to play things, um, conservative. And in this case, that being, uh, with a situation that has so much uncertainty, uh, with revenue and expenses and so many other things, to take, uh, just the PTEL, um, extension with the CPI rate, which is generally considered the standard, um, as far as what you would be looking at for a levy request, um, for the next fiscal year. Uh, the one exception to that is the village, um, which is, um, currently, uh, looking at, but has not voted to approve yet, um, a possible, uh, levy freeze on what they're doing. You know, th- they are in a position where they are able, um, to do that, uh, without cutting off services or anything of that nature. The, what they're deferring is a regular investment in, um, you know, their, their fleet of vehicles, um, some infrastructure projects. Uh, they have some deferrals, uh, as far as projects that have been imposed on them because there's things, um, that have not been able to get done, uh, because of the pandemic, such as the, uh, project on Green Bay Road, uh, that the village was looking forward to doing with IDOT, um, things that have been delayed, so, um, and those big capital projects are really what is. and those big capital projects are really what is fueling their desire to and ability to comfortably say that they can take a step back. You know, our budget is a bit different in in terms of, you know, our ability to move those numbers around as the village does. We can't really do that. And then I think that pretty much covers most of the most of the big points. So at this point, I would open things up to questions. See if anyone has any questions. There was a discussion that this could potentially be voted on if there's a general feeling of comfort with a particular option by the trustees this evening. It can't always be changed for quite a while yet. We're not locked in on this levy rate. You know, it would be a number that we would pass along to to the village board, but we could always change that at a subsequent meeting.
What is the end date? I mean, when is, when would they vote on it one way or the other?
I believe their rough timeline is to approve in their second meeting in November.
But we don't have a lot of time.
So we don't have a lot of time. We could always be changed at the November meeting. The we we have approved the the levy as as late as the start of December in the past. Usually you want to try and have things wrapped up before then, but it is doable. If if we truly wanted to go back to it, I believe that it is changeable up to up until the start of the next fiscal year. I think the village actually made some changes to theirs very late in the game last year, but I wouldn't recommend that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that sounds complicated to to go back and change something like that.
It is.
But the only other question I would have is, is would you see any pushback from the village about going for the, basically the most expensive of the three possibilities?
Well, as can be attested by anybody that, you know, has been involved with some of the conversations over the years that we've had with the village. You know, they can be a testy, let's call it, sometimes when when we don't precisely do what they think we necessarily ought to, but at at the same time, you know, I I think that they've always been very fair in in terms of, you know, listening to what the library has to say and why we're doing what we're doing. We've never had an experience where we've, you know, gone before the the finance committee or the village board and they've been, you know, told us that what we were planning or what we were saying was necessary was ridiculous or anything like that. We've always been able to have that conversation and I wouldn't expect this to be any different.
If we don't ask for the, if we don't ask for the CPI, we're not gonna, they're not gonna voluntarily give it to us. Right?
Um, they don't have the authority to tell us either way.
It's kind of hard levy to declare. So, or not.
Have we ever, with the exception of the the year with the roof, have we ever gone differently, gone a different route than the village? Or is the village pretty much always taking the PTAL and CPI as together?
Other than this year, to my, to my knowledge, the village has always taken the PTAL and the CPI.
Many, many years ago, we did a truth to taxation when the village wouldn't give us the money that we needed. And they had told us to spend down our reserve fund. And then we needed a new roof and there was nothing in the reserve fund. So we did we did go through a truth and taxation thing. I forget all the details of it, but I know it was a bit of a ruckus, but we got what we wanted and in addition to getting a new roof.
Yeah. That was fiscal year.
You hear just before I joined the board, I I just remember discussion where I, Eric, perhaps you can recall, the board chose not to take the higher of the recommendations.
That was 2000, 2011.
Okay.
Yeah, that that was a different time.
The effect of doing that is year after year after year, you're not getting that additional, those dollars. And so it's not like you just wait a year and then, you know, you catch up. You are forever behind the incremental increase that that year would have allowed you.
That's absolutely true.
There also was one year, like at some point within the last five years where the village announced that they would be doing a frozen levy, kind of, I think in the hope that other taxing bodies would be like, oh, well, us too. And no one did, except the village.
So to to summarize on the the other, the other point as far as when we've deferred, usually we follow along and both the library and the village take that PTAL with the CPI. Besides, two years ago, 2006, which was the one that Cal mentioned, catastrophic failure of the HVAC system. So we had no heat in February, roof was leaking and at the village's instruction, we had spent down the reserve to a zero balance. So there was a need for additional funding in short. And then 2011, when the board opted to hold the levy that year and not take the PTAL increase.
Which was stupid.
Which Cal has forever, which Cal voted against and is forever after maintained was stupid.
Yes, well, you know.
I think you're on the record that at that for seven years worth of meetings, Cal.
It has hurt us ever since. So what is it we're trying to do right now? Why are we trying to say we want to take the PTAL increase? Is that what we're trying to do?
Um, yes.
Well, then let's just say, okay, we're gonna take it.
I would tend to agree with you, Cal.
I as well.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
And Eric, I don't see a reason not to just agree to this tonight and be done with it. And I I also think in terms of the village in the past, Bettina, with the previous financial expert over there, always kind of appreciated us being upfront about this time, what our plans were. It helped her with her planning. And we have a new finance person who may may or may not agree that that's useful, but if we if we have a strong feeling, why not just share that and move on?
Sounds good. And I think an additional point in favor would be next meeting in in November, fingers crossed, board should be, will be looking to add a few new trustees, having a really major item like the levy vote on the agenda for someone's first meeting could be
daunting?
A little, a a little daunting to have somebody come in fresh and, you know, with a vote on that. You know, which is not a huge thing, but you know, throwing that out there that is in terms of getting them started, you know, having them come in at what would be then the start of the budget process rather than the end of the levy process probably makes more sense.
And just, just to be clear, Eric, we're saying we're gonna take the PTAL, which includes the the CPI index.
Yes. So that would be, the motion would be to seek a levy for fiscal year 21, 22, good heavens, of 1,013,829, which represents an increase of 2.644% and 26,118.
And you want a motion on that?
If someone would like to make a motion, I would be very entertained by a motion.
Well, I move that we do exactly what you said.
Second.
Okay, second from Cal and second, or motion from Cal and second from John. Money. So again, we will do a roll call vote. Trustee Hayes.
Hi.
Trustee Heinseman.
Hi.
Trustee Meyerhoff.
Hi.
Trustee Church.
Hi.
Trustee Stroh.
Hi.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, and I will let Bettina know first thing tomorrow morning that that was voted on and approved. She does appreciate knowing things in a timely manner. Makes her job a bit easier. And then moving on to the second item for new business, which is the trustee vacancies. Really, the the target for this evening in terms of those vacancies, we received six applications and the the primary goal for discussion tonight was to identify any applications where for whatever reason that the person applying did not seem unsuitable. Or if needed, because we received a a large number of applications to identify which ones would be invited in for initial interviews. My sense right now, looking through the applications, I confirmed residency for everybody that they're in Incorporated Lake Bluff. And my sense of reading through them was that there wasn't anybody that was disqualifying in in terms of, I didn't see anybody, you know, saying they wanted to get on the library board because you know, we were in touch with aliens or part of some, you know, massive conspiracy to beam thoughts into people's minds or something. You know, everyone seemed interested and earnest.
I would agree with you, Eric. I felt that way reading.
Yeah. And and I think six in terms of looking for two and potentially one to encourage to run for the vacancy that we'll have in the election in April, I think makes sense. I think that, I don't think we've got too many.
Right. So Eric, did you, but do both new board members have to run in April or not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the way that the the way that it's worded with Illinois state law is that you appoint someone to to fill fill the term up to, up until that next election, when it can be filled by the voters at that time. But generally, the way that it's worked is when when somebody's been appointed, you know, then usually that person then runs for, to fill out at least the next term.
Right. But I thought if you were, for instance, my term is up in 23, I guess. If someone took my position, I thought they would have it until then and then they run. It looks like we had everybody running in April.
It would.
I thought you filled in for the remaining of the person's term.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
It depends. And if if you'll remember, we did have a a situation where we ran into the more complicated side of that a few years back when Ruth Schnell was on the board, where if you've got someone that leaves the board early on in their term, then per Illinois state law, what what you are, what you have to do is you appoint someone to to fill out the the term, but then it goes to the election. And basically someone is elected to fill out the the remaining two years of vacant term. And that was that one election year that was real goofy where we had like three, four-year terms and one two-year term that was on on there. And we ended up managed somehow to end up with too many people running for one and not enough for the other. Because we had some confusion as far as when the paperwork was getting in.
Just bear with me for a minute. So we are replacing Tim Krieger's position. When is his term up?
His term was up in April 21.
Okay. And Bill, your term is up in April 21 and you are running. Yeah, so that's two. And then Kate?
Also April 21. And it wasn't Tim on the other one, it was Scott.
Oh, I forgot about Scott.
Yeah. So Scott and Scott and Kate's are the two. And both of their tenures were were up in April of 21.
Alright, so we're, alright.
And then the other two seats are Bill's and Cal's.
Alright. Then you, Janie, John and I are the other, the opposite of that.
Yep.
Right.
Oh, so Cal's running, Cal, you're running again in in April. I thought you were 23.
My term, my term is up in April of 21.
Okay.
I'm not running.
Sign.
Yeah. Break my heart.
Well.
Can still come to meetings though, Cal.
That definitely breaks my heart.
Be queen of the board.
Yeah, there you go.
So we will really be looking for two replacement trustees right now. Bill, you are running for.
Yeah, I I picked up the packet about a week or so ago and.
And then at, when the time comes, Cal, well, there will be someone running for her position at the election.
And ideally, it would be nice if there were three at least candidates in this batch here that, you know, everybody felt pretty good about and then could say, you know, we'll offer to these two and then the this third person will like really encourage to to run and submit the paperwork for the vacancy that's, that'll be there in.
I encourage that and invite them to just attend meetings virtually and see what's going on.
Yeah. That would be amazing. Have somebody nice enough to speed.
Yeah.
Start the next fiscal year.
Like an apprenticeship.
Eric, did you say that one of the six candidates though was not gonna run or did I, I may have misread something? All six said that they were gonna run if they.
All six had indicated that they would run.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I would suggest, Eric, in the future on this form, for, I don't know of anybody else, it would be useful to me to know how long these folks had lived in the village.
A couple of them stayed at Cal, they were in the village, but not everybody did.
Right.
I will take that into consideration for the forum for next time. And for this time, there will be an opportunity, of course, as part of the interviews to ask them. So we can still get that information.
So your plan, Eric, is to have another meeting, like a full board meeting, where we would meet and interview all these individuals?
Yes. So that is what I would like to move forward with is the next step would be to set up and identify a time for a special meeting and then use that as to do the the interviews, which it's probably not what anybody would call the ideal, but as with all the meetings, we would aim for video conferencing rather than face to face.
And the goal would be to identify two candidates in November, be sworn onto the board, and then a third candidate who would run for election in April.
Yes.
Alright.
And unless there's any, any objections, that's what I will do. I will get that set up so that can meet and greet these folks and get some amazing new trustees.
Although we just had a, you know, a bird's eye view of these folks, is there any discussion that needs to happen? Or are we good with the information we have for Eric to make the context?
Does anybody know any of them? None of the names were familiar to me at all.
I do not.
I I do know Andrew Martin fairly well.
Did you say very well or fairly well?
Fairly well. We're part part of a group that meets once a month, although we haven't met now for probably like four or five months, obviously with COVID. But he's the only one on there that that I I know fairly well.
I don't I don't know any of them. Never even heard any of the names.
I don't know any either.
I'm not I'm not super familiar with most of them. I recognize some of them as names, but there there isn't anybody you know, on there that that I recognize. And I would absolutely tell you if if there was a name on there that I recognized as somebody that you know, had a great fondness for coming in and pontificating or flamethrowing at the main desk when they were in. But there there isn't anybody that fits the bill on that. So I recognize some of the names as far as people that are regular patrons, but that's it.
Well, I'm really pleased that we, under the current circumstances, we have six villagers who would step up to with an interest, you know, to serve. I think that's wonderful.
Yeah. I agree.
I agree.
Delighted to see that many.
And on on how many we got, I would, though he's not here, could thank Glenn Cole over at Village Hall for that. He was as he usually is happy to get us into the Village e-newsletter.
Very nice.
Looking to get the word out about that we were looking for applications. Glenn has been amazing to work with.
He's a good guy.
Okay. And that, on that note, would take us up to the director's report.
If I could back up for one second, yes, the next step is you'll tell you will I would suggest to all of the all of us that if you have any key questions for an interview or for even an individual, send them to Eric, and he can kind of compile them. And it just might be useful in terms of a format for us to move forward, then you're kind of measuring apples and apples kind of thing.
How long are we? How long are we expecting the interviews to last?
In the past, the time limit has been 15 minutes. And
And I would assume that you're going to try and set that up sometime soon because the Lake Bluff votes or the Vote Lake Bluff Group is already starting, already have their meetings on the calendar in December. Is that correct? Okay.
Yep. And they're aware of what we're working on. So I've been keeping them looped in.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know anything else about this, though, than what I'm about to tell you. I'm trying to skip the time here. The I got an email from Vote Committee, which you may all have gotten as well. And I think about this, but there's going to be a drive-through signature drive, which having been a candidate a couple of years, one of the best things about this town hall is that you leave there with with most of your signatures, if not all. And otherwise, you know, you have to stand on corner and and this is not a good time to be doing that. So I want to make sure that we help our candidates as much as we can with signatures. So Eric, if you can inquire, and I will as well, as whatever this drive-through event is, and you know, spread the word, because it'll be hopefully, I'm sure it's very safe, efficient way of gathering signatures for the people who have stepped forward and to make their job a lot easier. And also to Bill and to any other candidates, I would be happy to do whatever I can to get signatures. That's that's something you have to do. It's it's a ridiculous system where you have to do this in November and December, when we have all of June, July, when it's nice out. And so whatever we can do to help out, we certainly in the past, we used to bring like a petition board meeting, we can't even do that. But you know, whatever we can do, we certainly will do. So let us know.
Sounds good. So and I will send out as well the the list of questions that we that the trustees had compiled for the last round of interviews a year ago as a starting point for compiling the list of the questions that go around.
That would be helpful. We don't have to reinvent that wheel necessarily.
Okay. Kathy, anything else? Anything else from anybody else on the trustee vacancies?
No, thank you.
Okay. And then that will take us up to the to the director's report. Couple items to highlight and add. First, I would highlight that Eliza has been doing a great job with the Forest Bluff Montessori School. They had contacted us at the start of their school year in August, asking about making use of the library resources. They use us as their library, so we're a very important resource to them. Eliza has worked with them to set up a process where they are making use of a modified Take 10 form that we're providing to the public for requests. And then we gather up materials that the kids are looking for and then provide those in a batch each week rather than having the kids have to come over during a pandemic in groups of five or six into the library. So they seem pretty excited and happy with that and seems to be working very well. So I think Eliza deserves kudos for the negotiation and implementation that's gone into that.
It's great.
I'm sorry, I keep jumping in on you, Eric. Did we lose Eric?
I'm here.
Okay. If I could springboard that comment back to John. Yesterday, we I mean, I guess we're HR meeting, but we we kind of wandered into the subject of fundraising. And a name that I've always kind of pushed through this process of the Lillard family. John and Paula are the senior Lillards. One of their daughters, I guess, is the executive director of the school that Eric is talking about. And our relationship with Forest Bluff has just gotten better and better and better over the years. And at some point in time, I hope that it's something that we can, you know, bring together as I'm I mean, their support for the children's library would be fabulous.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
You know, I know it's fundraising is kind of off in the distance right now, but those are things that I keep trying to think about and connect as possible.
I I I mean, several months ago, I I think I sent around possible naming, a naming rights.
Yes.
I don't I don't remember what I don't recall what price I put on the children's library, but that would be a starting point.
Yeah.
To look at.
Great. That's hopefully that conversation can take place.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Eric, I jumped in on you.
That's fine. I'm always interruptible. Okay. And then the other item I really wanted to draw attention to was that we are in the well, not present since she wasn't able to make it tonight, but still get to enjoy the company of a TV star in Katie Horner. The League of Women Voters was so tickled with and so appreciative of the the video that they partnered with her on for the voting tutorials on how to register to vote online, how to vote early, and other answering other voting questions that they worked out with the local access TV stations to run those. So those videos will be appearing on Channel 17 and 19.
Great.
So that's exciting. And before I segue into some COVID stuff, I would highlight that Martha and Katie have also been working on a really awesome Halloween trivia program. So that should be very exciting, too. And Jill. Sorry, Jill. And Eliza. And then I also do have to report, unfortunately, that this afternoon, there was a bulletin that did go out from the Lake County Health Department. Basically, providing a very strong recommendation for Lake County Schools to return to remote learning only. And the there hasn't been, that I'm aware of, an official post yet. But the word through the grapevine thus far is is that District 65 does plan to follow that recommendation. That does the recommendation comes along with the increasing numbers and reports pretty solid evidence for community transmission throughout Lake County. So the 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 reality unfortunately is, is that since I completed the board packet last week, we've continued to move towards a scenario where our neck of Illinois Region 9 for managing the pandemic is probably going to be taking a step backwards from Phase 4 to Phase 3. And the library at that time would likewise look to be modifying our services. What that would be, we would again, you know, go to a situation where we were relying on remote service, but also curbside service. So that would still be offered so that there would still be access to the physical materials. But we would not be having patrons coming in and making use of the library as a as a public space. I am not happy about that. I you know, feel like a little piece of me is dying inside, having to go through this again, because it was so much fun in March, but
What's the effective date?
It's a pandemic. So you know, we've we've got to do what we've got to do and safety comes first. But I interrupted you.
As of when?
I don't know yet. It sounds like the schools, most likely, again, there isn't anything official. It would probably be the start of next week.
Okay.
But I I don't know when the additional changes would go into effect. I would guess next week, but if there's been one constant factor throughout all of this, it's it's been that things have always been a bit uncertain and unexpected.
Okay.
So I will keep the keep the board posted as things progress on that. And you will absolutely hear from me if there is any sort of a situation that requires us to modify services. So that's happening.
Was the notification just on District 65 or 115 as well?
The 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 note that I mentioned that got the conversation kickstarted was from the Lake County Health Department.
Okay.
And they sent it out to all the
All Lake County Schools.
All Lake County Schools. Yeah. So they are requesting that all of the schools, public and private, which they don't have the authority to just say, you guys got to close. So they are strongly encouraging everyone to go to remote only.
And that's all of Region 9, which includes McHenry as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, I believe McKenny McHenry is where the the numbers are higher in McHenry County. So they've already had, I believe, a similar statement out. So
Will that affect staffing? Well, if we have less, are we going to have less people in and out, I presume, or is that where?
We would. Yes. You know, in in a staffing setup where we would not have you know, hours where we were open to the public, we wouldn't need to have as many staff into the building. And we would try to have less staff into the building. You know, as a as a as a rule of thumb, I've tried to tried to follow. If if we're in a scenario where you know, the 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 building's closed because we don't want people gathering, then we as a staff probably should not be gathering in numbers either.
So is it would it be correct to say that basically we would just have curbside Tuesdays and Thursdays?
Well, that is, that is a really, that is kind of the question right now. What we might take a look at doing is maybe looking at maybe adding an extra day in there potentially. I throw out completely, you know, before the staff has had a chance to really talk about that and debate and kick it back and forth, which will be at our next meeting here a little bit later this week. But
Well, good luck with that.
There there might be, there might be an opportunity there. We would definitely try and add some additional curbside if our doors weren't open for people to come in. But yeah, it's, that's where we're at.
Okay.
I would also, because we had such an exciting afternoon. If I don't know if anybody noticed all of the flashing lights that we briefly had around the library this afternoon.
When was that?
When was that, Eliza?
4:45. It was after you stopped by, Janie. Yeah.
I was gonna say, I didn't see that.
No.
Okay. We we did have a a minor medical incident this afternoon at the library. Should anyone mention that there were ambulances outside the library? We had someone that became disoriented and fell. Eliza, who is the senior staff person on the premises, handled things very efficiently, very well. We got emergency medical folks there to check on the person and eventually you know, got him on a ride to medical facilities where he could be checked out and helped. So that was all handled quickly and effectively. So Eliza deserves a lot of kudos for for that as well.
Thank you, Eliza.
Thank you.
It's always one of the more challenging ones when somebody's
Library with Eliza there.
Yep, you're you're always safe falling down at the library if Eliza's about.
I'll keep that in mind.
It's my new slogan.
Is everything working out with checks? I know Janie's been and Eric have been handling the bulk of it. I can certainly get over there if you give me them out from time to time, just let me know.
And he's been great by to to sign the checks. And that's been much appreciated.
It's not like I don't walk by once in a while.
But Kathy will definitely keep you in, keep you in mind as well. Kind of been trying to keep things as small in terms of the number of people involved as we can, of course. But Janie likes to travel sometimes, so.
I I think I'm done for a little while.
Okay, so that's all I've got for the director's report. So unless there's So unless there's other items of business or other questions in general that anyone has, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I.
Motion carries unanimously. Meeting is adjourned at twelve minutes after eight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, buddy.
Yeah, thank you.
Good meeting.
That was a good meeting. These are getting very efficient.
They are moving along nicely.
Yeah.
If it's under an hour and a half, it's a good one.
All right, take care, everybody.